City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burrus.
Here.
Alderman Fisk.
Yep.
Alderman Braithwaite.
I'm here.
Alderman Wynn.
I'm here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Alderman Holmes.
Here.
Alderman Tindham.
Here.
Alderman Grover.
Still here.
Alderman Ramey.
Here.
Down zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, July 14th, 2014, meeting of the Evanston City Council. First agenda item is the Mayor's Public Announcements. July is National Park and Recreation Month. City Manager, do you have announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I do. I'd like to ask Joe McCray, our Parks Recreation Community Services Director, to come up and say just a few words about National Parks and Recreation Month and what we're doing here in Evanston to recognize it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Clerk Green and City Manager Bockwitz. Joe McCray, Director of Parks Recreation Community Services, happy to be for you tonight, celebrating July as the National Parks and Rec Month. We're doing a lot of exciting things in our department. We have over 30 camps going on. We have over 3,500 kids. We got Food Truck Festival coming up tomorrow night. We have the Ethnic Arts Festival happening this weekend.
Where's that Food Truck Festival?
Rummel Park.
Oh, Rummel Park.
Five thirty.
Five thirty. I don't want to steal the thunder. I know you're going to do better than I can. Ethnic Arts Festival happening this Saturday and Sunday at Centennial Park, Fleetwood Jordan Theater, just to celebrate 35 years. And if you haven't seen Gee's Bend, you need to get there. It's an amazing show. And also, we have a new mobile app that's going to be coming out later this month. We know how much people like to interact with their phones, and we know how much they love their parks. And so we wanted to make it convenient for everyone to be able to access information about Parks and Rec here in Evanston via their phones. But just because we're Parks and Rec and we like to have a little bit of fun, we have a video here for you that just shows, highlights, all the great activities that are happening with our summer camps. And so I'm going to ask Cindy Plant to play that from the beginning and give you a little taste of what we have going on this summer.
that you could actually find that we offer. Like, if you're into boating activities, water sports and water activities, there's tons of aquatics-type camps. If you're more into sports, and that's really all you kind of want to do, you're just gung-ho on sports, there's sports-specific camps, there's art-specific camps. If you're interested in anything, you know, we probably have a program or a camp that's going to kind of be just right along those lines and hopefully, you know, be really exciting to a lot of the youth in Evanston.
It's not just a summer camp. It's, like, me personally, I remember, like, I remember times when I was five years old being at this camp on this park. You come here, you, it's one of those lifetime things, and I'm still here today for that reason, because I enjoyed the camp, because I came here, because I had a good time, and I like giving back to the kids.
I went to camp here when I was younger, and this is my second year being a counselor, and I love it. I know everyone, all the, like, the counselors were all so close, and it's just such a fun experience being here.
Our staff are very invested. They're from Evanston, and they were once Evanston kids at one time, and, you know, they, they take a lot of pride in that, in making sure the quality of the programs are great and that the kids are all having a really positive experience. We get kids from all over Evanston, and why that's really great is because, you know, they're making friends outside of school. They're meeting other kids in Evanston just like them and developing these shared interests and realizing, oh, I have so much in common with, you know, kids I would never normally see, but with these programs, it's getting kids from all different sides of Evanston together, getting them to meet each other and, and developing these relationships and getting them more friends and getting them, you know, more excited about doing different things and getting out of the house and having fun.
Meeting new people and also, like, just all evening experiences, like, they're not sitting at home on their iPods. They're here playing outside all day, and what do you ask for in summer? I mean, it's awesome.
Just wanted to close really quickly by saying that all the great things that you see there would not be possible if not for the support of this City Council and the community and the staff here at the City of Evanston. We greatly appreciate it, and we hope that you all will come out and enjoy the summer with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alderman Grover? Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. McCray, is there a link to the video on our YouTube channel? Or how can we keep replaying and enjoying the video if we want?
It will be there.
It will be there.
It will be on YouTube for sure.
Great, thank you.
Certainly will tweet it out as well.
Perfect.
Next, Madam Mayor, I'd like to ask Dave Stonebeck, our Utilities Director, to come up and talk about our 100th anniversary of Clean Water, Safe Water, coming up this, in two weeks.
Thank you, Madam. Tisdale, Alderman, Clerk Green, and City Manager Bockwitz. It's my pleasure to invite you and the residents and businesses of Evanston to attend an open house event at the Evanston Water Plant located at 555 Lincoln Street on Saturday, July 26th, from 9:00 until 11:30 a.m. The open house is part of our celebration of 100 years of clean, safe water in Evanston. In 1913, the City Council had the foresight to approve the construction of a 12 million gallon-a-day water filtration plant to combat typhoid fever and increase water quality. This filter plant was constructed for a sum of $205,000 and placed into service in July 1914. These same filters are in operation today. The Utilities Department personnel will have several displays on the history of the water plant, as well as displays on the materials and tools that we currently use. We're going to provide walking tours of the facility, as well as a PowerPoint virtual tour for people who might not want to take that long of a walk. So we hope to see everybody in Evanston, as well as the council, come to our open house. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. What did we do for safe water before 100 years ago? I mean...
It wasn't exactly safe. We started pumping water 140 years ago.
From that same location?
From that same location.
Right.
And it was unfiltered. It was just put into the pipelines, and unfortunately, people were getting typhoid fever. One in every six people would actually pass away from it. So there was a large epidemic in 1911 and '12, and they started feeding the hydrochloric of lime, and then they decided to build a filter plant in 1913.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stonebeck.
The hours, Dave, of the event again?
I'm sorry. The event starts at 9:00. Mayor Tisdale is making open comments at 9:30, and then it lasts until 11:00. You can come at any time that you want. The tours will start after the mayor's speech, and the exhibit booths will be open from 9:00 o'clock on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next presentation, Nora Dietrich, who I thought I saw here, from the Evanston Art Center, and she is here to make a few announcements.
Thank you all, Mayor Tisdale, City Council members. Wally, thanks for the invitation. It's nice to follow the Parks video, because happiness for me right now is that we've identified a building in Evanston that'll be the, the really perfect site for our next home, and it's at 1717 Central Street.
Yay!
This building and its excellent location will help us take the Evanston Art Center to the next level. And while the visual arts will remain our primary focus, we're adding complementary programming in the areas of culinary, design, film, movement, music, and many others. A more digital fabrication lab as well, artist and residence studio, and coffee bar will be included, along with light-filled, flexible gallery spaces that will accommodate large-scale and multimedia artist projects. A dedicated parking lot, which is really the first thing our students ask for, an elevator in close proximity to public transportation, shops, and restaurants will add to the appeal of this new building. It will accommodate all of our current programming except for our metal sculpture studio, and we have to find a, another satellite space for the metal and hopefully a woodworking shop that'll go along with it. The principal areas of our expanded impact will be youth education and creative development, lifelong learning, providing opportunity for arts professionals, and community engagement. We've signed a contract on this space at 1717 Central Street, are now in, as of July 8th, our 60-day due diligence period. Now, our plan is to purchase the building this fall and begin renovation work right away. And we look forward to opening the doors of a vibrant and inclusive center for arts and culture in the spring of 2015. So in order to sustain the future of the Evanston Art Center and to solidify its new role as a place where creativity meets community, we need to raise $2,500,000. And we're hopeful that our due diligence efforts will be successful, and we're launching our, our campaign for the future of the Art Center, and we're calling it See the Bigger Picture, which is all about a bigger picture of arts engagement. Information about contributing to this important community fundraising event will be available soon on our website, and if we all work together, 1717 Central Street will be rejuvenated into a thriving center of arts and culture that will contribute to the life and economy of Central Street, as well as the surrounding communities. Thank you for your patience. It's going to be a great building. I only have one brochure with the artist's rendering, so Mayor Tisdale, can I leave this with you?
You can trust me.
Okay.
And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you. City Clerk, do you have communications for us?
No, Madam Mayor, do not, not tonight.
Next on the agenda is citizen comment, and I'm going to call the first four names. You each have three minutes. Please give your name and address. Junad Rizki, Dick Peach, Madeline Ducre, and Betty Esther.
Junad Rizki, 2784 Sheridan. Wally, at the human service meetings in regards to Next Theaters unpaid rent for over two years, admitted the city was not in business. The question I keep asking is how many bad investments we have with taxpayer money. The issue is not city government is a business. The issue here is for two years, the taxpayers never knew about this problem. So who was responsible and why? Why can't we get some answers for this? Recently, in economic development, it has come up that Chicken and Waffles is behind in its rent, or its loan payment, I should say. What action is the council planning to take on this? Will we wait another six months or a year to figure out what's going on? Of course, I may be asking at every meeting about this one, too. Public officials in Wally here seem to be rather hypocritical, because you have a long history of claiming mismanagement on others. The branch libraries, Harley-Clark, the township, the golf course, and recently Care. Yet any, every one of these items has your fingerprints on it all over it. What is of greater concern to me, and I've been repeating this at numerous meetings, is a water utility, whether it's 100 years old or not, it's a multimillion-dollar problem that possibly dwarfs the police and fire pension funds here. And I keep on asking for some answers out of the council, because the numbers don't add up. And, you know, you're talking about Sheridan Road tonight, and the water department appears not to be replacing the pipe under the street. Recently, something collapsed over there, because there was, they were doing work over there. So I'm really interested in what that was, either it's a sore water line. So if the city's not going to fix these things, it's rather ridiculous. The truth is, the Evanston taxpayers are in trouble for this, just like Next Theater. It's not that, hey, this is wonderful, I'm a subscriber, we have a real problem with that water plant. And frankly, this council seems more interested in things like banning plastic bags than dealing with issues. Grocery stores and other businesses are margin, very small-margin businesses. We've seen the disappearance of Dominix. Again, maybe more hypocrisy, because we're willing to give another grocery store to come down millions of dollars of our TIF money that we're going to ban plastic bags. And, you know, frankly, I'll probably be shopping at Jewel &amp; Womack, because I live close to the Evanston border, and I know some public officials will probably be shopping there, so maybe, maybe we'll see some more hypocrisy when they're picking up plastic bags. But frankly, dealing with these corporations and businesses, if you're going to set rules and things, they're going to probably pull out of here, because there's someone somewhere else in another location will just say, hey, we're not going to deal with it. So if you want to keep jobs in town, you better start thinking about what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm Dick Peach. I live at 1414 Greenleaf in the fabulous Fourth Ward, and I'm here to talk to you tonight about the plastic bag ordinance and urge you to spend some time and maybe send us back to committee. This is a wonderful idea that I think is very misplaced. I think we have a problem with litter. I think we have a problem on multiple levels, but I don't think plastic bags are the sole culprit, and I think there's a much better way to deal with this. I think Whole Foods has shown us that with education and incentives, people will change their habits. I think the big problem with a plastic bag is not the bag, it's the person. It's how we handle it. And if we're in the middle of negotiating our, our contracts right now for waste removal and recycling, might be a wonderful time to include plastic bag recycling with that contract. I think it's an excellent time to be doing that. I think we have to look at this. Catherine has done a wonderful job of providing data, and I think if we actually read the information that she's provided, I don't think, see how you can possibly justify a ban on plastic bags, because all the alternatives are even worse. And I'll be quite honest, I, my business is on a major street, and I'm surrounded by fast-food restaurants. I have Burger King, I'm soon to have Starbucks, I have McDonald's, I have Subway, I have Dunk and Donuts, all within about 150 to 200 feet of my store. And I will tell you what the big problem with is in plastic bags. It's single-use items that are truly single-use items. Paper cups, paper bags, food wrappers, and plastic water bottles. That's about 99% of the trash that I see littering in my neighborhood. Very rarely do I see a plastic bag any longer. Now, I'll admit, somewhere down, I'm sure along the train tracks down Ant Ward, if you look down the tracks along where... Well... (laughter) I mean, there's a possibility where winds get into tunnels that way, where that's a possibility. But I think the issue here is, how do we deal with this? And I don't think we need to spend the money on enforcement, on writing more ordinances, to do something that we can do with education and with incentives to the community to have them learn how to deal with this problem intelligently and on a first-time basis. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Madeline Ducre. I'm a resident of Evanston. Won't keep you long with the, the agenda. I also want to comment on the bags. I believe we should keep the bags in the stores. I talked to a few people at the different stores, and Walgreens in particular, I remember, because he said he would do what the City Council suggested or came upon, you know, made a complete decision on. I also asked him what type of bags would he use. He said paper bags. I said, really? Are you going to double them, triple them? He said, if we have to, we would do it. Would you be losing money, et cetera? He said, probably. So, but anyway, he'll leave it up to you guys. I hope you all do not ban the bags. Also, we have to realize that the dog poop goes in the bags. I have a black garbage bag in front of my house, and the dog poop goes in there with most of the people carrying it. And believe me, it is a odor. And my dining room is right on the corner. When they pass, they also poop, and I have to give it to them. Most of the time, people pick up their, their poop, but they throw it in my, I mean, in the city garbage can, and I have to clean it out. I can't leave it in there, like, once a week or whatever, when the people come by and pick up, because it smells too doggone bad, you know? So therefore, and by the way, I used to come up here and get some city bags, but I'm told that's it. So I have to go to Sam's Club and pay. They're not cheap. Okay. The dog poop in those green bags, what do you guys do with that? I'll leave that open. Okay, the next thing I'd like to comment on is, I think about the, what number was that? Sorry. With the, the lab, I was talking to my Alderman, here it is, about it before, because I wanted to save some time, but as Dolores knows, I'm going to save my little two cents. I think that we should table this and wait and check out and see if there's any more feasible people that we can save money on. We have a lot of high tech here in Evanston. I also ask about what about Chicago? What about other people that might be charging us less than that? So it's something to think about. I also want to state something about the H3 ordinance, Human Rights Ordinance, that was made here. I just want to say just a couple of things. We need this to be enforced, because I, I'm listening to a lot of people out in the neighborhoods and so forth, and they're saying that when they go to look for apartments and so forth, the people treat them badly, very badly.
Madeline, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. Well, let me just say this, because there's something happening out in the community now. I want to ask the council, is there any immigration issues we have in here in Evanston? Because what I saw on CNN with Mr. Ibarra, I-B-A-R-A, when he commented about the immigration laws, that he is a brown-skinned man, and they don't look at the whites, the Polish, the Russians that come into this country. I must say, I have to agree with him, because there are a lot of things that go back to the Hispanic people, so forth. He made the mistake, and I had to read this three or four times. I had to look it up.
Madeline, I do need you to wrap up.
Okay. This is the key. He said, the nigger man who is, which is the president. A lot of comment is going on in the neighborhood. We already have a Hispanic problem here in Evanston, and if you don't know that, you should. There's a lack of communication going on. We should look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
I stay at 2031 Church Street. I'm here tonight to speak on H3, which is ordinance 26-0-14, Evanston Human Rights Ordinance. The Human Rights Service Committee and the staff recommended the City Council adopt this ordinance for the Human Rights Ordinance and have Title I, Chapter IV, to be fair employment. And say, oh, okay. And then it made me think about, oh, the bags. And we are talking about getting rid of the bags, which would more or less cause plants to close, which would get rid of employment. Now, would that fall under the fair employment practice? It's iffy. But what really struck me in this ordinance, when they talk about the age, at what age is considered a protective right? I guess they was picking that up from the state. It says from age 40 to 65. That is the protected age. What happened to the people over 65? They are not protected by that? I think it should read just the people 40 and over are the protective, because that is what the federal law states. It doesn't say just up to 65. It say you're in a protective class at age 40, not 40 to 65, 40. That need to be corrected. If not, then it need to be expanded on and really explained so that people will understand why, if you're 66 and somebody does something to you, you really have to look at it to see whether or not you'll be able to file a discrimination complaint. As it stand, they would not. Thank you.
Thank you. The next four speakers are Diane Britton, Audrey Steele, Renee Sophia, and Junad Rizki.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdale.
Good evening.
Basically, we all from the Eighth Ward. Mayor Holmes, Alderman, is our Alderman. What we come and ask for tonight is more police presence in our ward, because our ward seems to have all the problems, all the murders you put into the funerals, and more affordable homes and jobs. This is what we asking from the City Council. We need more police presence in our area. My street right now, Alderman Holmes can tell you, you can walk down 1929 Jackson, there's no problem, because I'm doing my street, and it's clean. We don't worry about plastic bags. Our plastic bag, we use them to pick up the garbage. That's the kid's job. They want candy, they can pick up the garbage outside. They don't want putting it out there. So that's what we come in here to ask for. Affordable houses in our ward, police presence, because this killer has to stop.
Well, I agree with you, and thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. And we'll be working harder to help you.
Okay.
Good night.
Good evening to the City Council of Evanston. I am here on behalf of the North Shore Cab Company of Evanston, and I have been here before, but it seems like that we cannot come to some kind of impasse here as to what is happening with the cab situation in Evanston. We need to enforce the laws that Evanston has regarding cabs. We need insurance, we need licenses, we need permits. The North Shore Cab pays over $10,000 a year for this, but the Uber X cabs, which are allowed to be driven in Evanston, are not. We have tried to talk to the Police Department and various other departments in the city to try to get these laws enforced. Our cabs would get in trouble if we did any of the things that the Uber X cab has done. Everybody has the right to make an honest living, but you must be able to follow the rules, and this is where we're having the problem, that it is imperative, and I'd like to state again, imperative, that something is done about this situation, that people are losing money, people cannot support their families. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming. Mr. Rizki?
Junad Rizki, 2784 Sheridan. Recently, I was labeled a frequent FOIA filer. That's really nice, but frankly, it's an issue with response time now has been getting increased. So tonight, I'm going to bring a few topics to council so we can have a better, maybe, discussion. We'll bring them forward now, rather than wait for the time I have to wait now for FOIAs. First item, please explain to me how 311 is operated. It has come to my attention the city is taping the calls going into 311. Well, that may be fine there, but apparently, after some of these calls leave 311, they're going to city employees, and when I talk to a city employee, the call may be being taped. I want to know if that's going on and who's taping these calls and why. The city has also, may be listening in to these calls, I've been told. So I'd like to know what the policies and procedures of 311 is and what's going on there. So if somebody could basically enlighten me, that's, that's what I'll be asking, I guess, in my lengthy FOIA, it's got to wait now for a longer time. Item two, there's a city parking lot by the North Branch Library. Recently, I went through there. We spent half a million dollars on this. I counted 17 rental spaces there. Only four were occupied by cars. Two had recreational vehicles. And also, one of the spaces was occupied by a city vehicle. Number 666 occupied one of the spaces. I'm wondering if the city's paying for the space and why it's there. Maybe someone can enlighten me on this. What is the city policy with these rentals? Are we having another thing that's, that's not performing again with rentals of these parking lots? What's going on here? It appears to me we should be opening those parking spaces to shoppers and increasing those on Central Street. Also, I'd like to know what is the city policy for employees using vehicles? Taking them basically from home appears to be taken... Taking them basically from home, appears to be taking them home. I'd like to know how many of those vehicles the city has. I know the city manager by contract has a vehicle, which is fine, but I want to know how many other city employees have a vehicle? You don't? What? What? I thought you had a vehicle under your contract, a vehicle allowance. You have a vehicle allowance? Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
All right. And finally, on water, I think it's, I was somewhat amused on that issue too, because frankly, the, the safety of water here is, is interesting to me, because frankly, I, I don't, I let, I drink, I have my, I even give my pets bottled water, because frankly, there's one thing in the water that concerns me, that's the lead binders. You're binding lead in the pipes. So frankly, how safe the water is to drink is an interesting thing, but you won't die from it, but lead binders in water are interesting. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Madeline Ducrez is the last speaker.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna rush this time.
Go for it.
Okay. Okay, there's several things I have to comment on. We need a dog poop park in our area. I love dogs, Mr. Green, please don't. Look at me like that. I love dogs, but we have to do something about where the dogs poop. Around my house, my children, my grandchildren play out there, and I understand, their little research is 23, over 23 diseases that these children can, can catch, okay? I'm gonna leave that alone. We need a dog poop, just like over on Skokie and, um, Oakton, in that area, some kind of way. The next thing is, I wanted to talk about the jobs for the youth. Many children do not have jobs still. I understand we got some extra money. Uh, have we hired any more children for that, for that money that came in? Another thing is, we do a background check on the children, drug testing on these children. There's at least three young people I know who tested for marijuana. This, and most of them are boys, in fact, all three of them are. What are they doing now? I see them hanging. So what, we have a dilemma here. What are we going to do? I'll leave that open. The next thing is, the police academy. We don't want any children, that's not the way I look at it, and the way they look at it, who's up to par or have the click. In other words, if I done done something, if I have a background check, you don't want me. They're the ones who should be learning about these police officers out here, folks. They're the ones should be touched. Don't isolate them. Don't set them up. Please think about that. The next thing, the township, excuse me, the general assistant in the city. There are people that come to me and ask me, "I need money. Either if I do that, I'm, I'm gonna be behind in my rent, I done lost my job, blah, blah, blah." I say, "Go to the city. The city have taken over the township. Two people came here. They also look for Mr. Henry. Where is he?" They said, "I don't know. I'll ask the city council tonight, okay, when I go there." They said, "They don't have any money. They said, 'Go to Connections.'" Connections? What, what are you talking about? No, 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 no. I don't need to, we need to tell these people what is happening out in the community. They take off from work, they come here, nothing there, they go to Connection, they don't have any more money. So what do we do? There's three people, no, four, I know, who have moved to Des Plains, and not only because of the shooting going on, folks. There's one house, at the end of my house, sign went up after the shooting on, um...
Madeline, I need you to wrap up.
I know, I know, Mayor, believe me. But this one minute is not gonna hurt, it's gonna help these people, okay? What I have to say here, please, give me one minute. The next thing is, we need to let these people know they need, there's help that we can find for them around here, to help them to stay in this town and to survive. Homeless is another issue, believe me. There's many sleeping on couches, okay? Now, the next thing is, and it hurts me to say this, what are we going to do with the armored truck? The armored truck sat on Foster and Dodge Avenue. Where's that information coming from? There was a shooting down there. What happened? I saw one camera that they say very seldom come through on the corner of Foster and Dodge with the car. Where is the information? We have high tech, a big truck that takes care of five or six cars, what is it doing? Now, let me just say this, to the council members and to the people in this...
You've had an extra minute and a half.
Just one more minute, Mayor. I don't mean, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but this is the end of it. Our children, and when I say our children, I mean all of our children, okay, is hurting one way or another. Either they're killing themselves, or either they're killing themselves with guns or the other way. Now, here's what I'm saying with the killing. We gotta make that priority, okay? Now, I have on my corner, a little sign that says, "If you come on my corner, if you come with the wrong mindset, the attitude of shooting up, I'm gonna identify your butt, and I will, I will call the police and I will identify you if I see it." Please, I'll reach out to everyone in this town, especially in the 5th Ward. Parents got to get up off their butt, search their children's drawers and, and under their beds or whatever. We are, these are our children, and we had better get up off our butts and do something, okay? They're wounding each other, they're killing each other, and we as parents got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes citizen comment. And Alderman Rainey, could we have the consent agenda, please?
It's very difficult to follow Madeline, and, because I agree with everything she just said.
I do too.
Really hit the nail on the head. Um, the consent agenda, Madam Mayor. Uh, first item is approval of minutes at the council meeting, June 23. The Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we're recommending the city payroll through June 29, $2,890,950.50. The city bills, July 15, $2,981,001.38. The credit card bills, May 31, $162,353.13. The committee recommends we authorize city manager to execute a professional contract for the Church Street Boat Ramp renovation project with Smith Group JJR, um, at a total cost of $68,000. This is a project, Madam Mayor and council members, where we received a natural resources grant in the amount of $200,000. We ask your approval also to authorize the manager to purchase a membership to the Northeastern Illinois Regional Crime Laboratory in the amount of, um, $11,171.58 for the remainder of 2014, beginning on September 1, and in the amount of $101,059 for 2015. We have money in the general fund for this, and we'll budget, uh, for 2015. We ask your approval to authorize a change order, number one, for finished water metering improvements with Glen Brook Excavating and Concrete, uh, to extend the contract by 35 days to October 16, with no, um, financial implications. We ask your approval, uh, to accept and place on file the 2013 audited annual financial report. We ask your approval also, uh, for the adoption of Resolution 37R14, releasing the closed session minutes, um, listed on Exhibit A, and finding that a need still exists for confidentiality as to the minutes in Exhibit B. Approval is also requested for introduction of Ordinance 80014, decreasing the number of Class D licenses from 50 to 49, by Indian Grill, um, as the company has been sold. We ask your approval also for, uh, decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for Red Maki, uh, doing business as Roy and Sushi Bar, as the company no longer sells liquor at this establishment. Your approval is also requested for, for the introduction, just, just relax, I, before you take it off, um, uh, for introduction of Ordinance 66014, enacting a ban on disposable plastic shopping bags, et cetera. The committee has suggested and voted to introduce this item and return it to committee for as long as it takes to consider this, so, just so that the discussion can continue. If anybody has an objection to that, I'll take it off. Good. Um, next item is, uh, A10, we ask your approval, uh, to introduce the draft ordinance for the bond issuance for, uh, 2014, and the not to exceed amount totaling, uh, not more than $13 million. This ordinance will be completed and signed after the bond sale date, which is tentatively scheduled for July 31. For action tonight is, um, Ordinance 74014, which authorizes the city to borrow funds from the IEPA, uh, Water Pollution Control Loan Program for the construction of the large diameter sewer rehab on Cleveland Street. The ordinance authorizes the city to borrow up to $253,000. We ask your approval for, um, Ordinance 69014, which amends the code, uh, which increases fines for using a mobile telephone while operating a motor vehicle from the current $50 fine to $75. Approval is also requested for Ordinance 86014, amending the code, which increases the fines for riding a bicycle on a sidewalk in the central business district designated as D123, or in any district where signs prohibiting sidewalk riding are posted, uh, from the current $15 to $25. We ask your approval for, um, Ordinance 76014, uh, which will increase the number of authorized Class D licenses. Do you want this off, Alderman Fisk? Were there some amendments?
Thank you, there, there are some amendments.
But should I, I'll just take it off?
Okay.
Okay. We're gonna take, uh, DMK Burger Bar and Fish Bar off the consent agenda. There were some amendments in committee. Sorry about that. Um, the Planning and Development Committee met this evening and ask your approval of a sidewalk cafe for Naf Naf Grill at 1629 Orington. Also for DMK Burger and Fish at 815 Noys, another sidewalk cafe. Approval is also requested for a $300,000 forgivable home loan to community partners for affordable housing for the acquisition and rehab of a five-flat property at 1620 Washington Street. Home funds will be used for the acquisition and rehab of three of the five units for rental by households with incomes, um, less than 60% of the median income. Approval is also requested, uh, by the Housing and Homelessness Commission, and staff recommends also approval of a forgivable loan from the city's Affordable Housing Fund to Housing Opportunity Development Corporation, in an amount not to exceed $25,000 for cameras, security cameras at the 48-unit Claret apartment building at 319 Dumpster. Next is, uh, P5, Ordinance 90014, granting zoning relief for a rear yard setback and zero parking spaces at 1026 Davis Street. This is for introduction. Next is, uh, P6, Ordinance 83014. I'm taking this off the consent agenda. And also, P7 is off the consent agenda. The Human Services Committee recommends, um, the approval of the 2014 Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, allocations totaling $135,000. $125,384 to two social, whoops, to two social service agencies, um, hold on a second, I lost my place. Uh, two social service agencies that provide housing and services for individuals and families who are homeless or at the risk of homelessness, and $10,166 to the City of Evanston for grant administration. Council, uh, is requested to adopt Resolution 54R14, which authorizes the manager to accept a grant from Illinois Housing Development Authority, abandoned residential property municipal relief program, uh, in the amount of $75,000 to address property maintenance issues of, uh, registered vacant properties. The Human Rights Ordinance, um, amending is, will amend, uh, Title I of the City Code, codifying an Evanston Human Rights Ordinance and amending City Code Title I, Chapter 12, Fair Employment Practices, and Title V, Chapter 5, Fair Housing. Um, Ordinance 26014 mirrors what is already state law by way of the Illinois Human Rights Act. Is this to be off, is this to be, um, suspend the rules?
Sure.
Human Services Committee, should I do that? Why not? Uh, Madam Mayor, also, I'm gonna add to this a suspension of the rules for Ordinance 26014. Next, um, the Piven Theater Workshop Lease Agreement, uh, requesting that we authorize the city manager to enter into this agreement for a 12-month term to lease certain space at the Noys Cultural Arts Center. Um, also recommend, uh, council adoption of Resolution 50R14, uh, recommending the city manager enter into an agreement for an eight-month lease term for art encounters for space at the Noys Cultural Arts Center. Um, council is requested to adopt Resolution 51R14, authorizing the manager to enter into a lease agreement with Next Theater Company for a 17-month term, uh, for certain space at the Noys Center. Next, we ask, uh, that the council adopt Resolution 52R14, authorizing the manager to negotiate debt repayment, and authorize enforcement of the collection of debt owed to the city by Next Theater Company in the principal amount of $76,345. Uh, a recommendation is, um, before you to authorize, uh, the manager to enter into an agreement with Actors Gymnasium for an eight-month lease term for the space at Noys Cultural Arts Center. Next, um, Madam Mayor has made the following appointments, or recommends the following appointments, ADA Advisory Board, Jean Prindaville, Board of Ethics, Jennifer Billingsley, Downtown Performing Arts Center Task Force, Allison Brown Lieber and Michael Johansson, Housing and Homelessness Commission, Noel Galbraith and Monica Wong, Human Relations, Leslie Lane Palmer, Library, Sean Iles, uh, MWEBE, Mahanyan Nematala Mahani, Sign Review and Appeals, David Wolkowitz. With this, Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda, seeing no one wants further discussion. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the consent agenda passes. Alderman Holmes, would you walk us through Administration and Public Works, please?
A14.
A14, uh, Ordinance 76-0-14, increasing the number of, uh, Class D liquor licenses for DMK Burger Bar and Fish Bar at 815 Noys Street, uh, with move approval.
Been moved and seconded. Alderman Fisk?
Uh, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, there were, um, two points that we wanted to raise in a meeting with the applicant. Um, we reached the agreement that it would be beer and wine that was served only, not, uh, not, not liquor. I would also like to clarify the language in, um, Section 1 under D, where it says, um, alcoholic liquor may be sold in restaurants holding Class D licenses only during the period when their patrons are offered a complete meal. their patrons are offered a complete meal. Again, referring back to the fact that we're going to have a more expanded discussion about this, I would rather that the language in this ordinance and other ordinance refer to patrons being served a meal. I think we can remove the word "complete." I don't know what a complete meal is. It may be something different to different people, but I think that more comports with the understanding that most of us who have been following this on the council for a long time seem to have had.
I thought it might mean eat your vegetables.
It might be. With you, I would have to eat my lima beans, or I couldn't get another margarita or something. We'll talk about that later. Anyway, those are the two changes that I would suggest here.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Alderman Holmes?
I just wanted to say at the committee meeting, and I don't know if you heard it, Alderman Fisk or not, but Director Farrar did present us with a chart of on the Class D, there would be a Class D 1, Class D 2, with the beer and wine, and then we did ask for some additional information. I think Alderman Rainey said even more classes that we would talk about because we too had an issue with what is a complete meal and how would you define that. So we will come back with that at a later date after the staff has had a chance to review it some more.
I just didn't -- I was a little bit worried that this might be grandfathered in and --
Well, I'm thinking that this one couldn't be grandfathered in because we started before, and I believe that this would be a D 1 -- I mean, a D 2. This would be a D 2 license for DMK. Is that correct, Mr. Farrar?
Madam Mayor, members of the committee, Clerk Green, Grant, Farrar Corporation Council, with respect to the -- members of council, I should say. With respect to the discussion that was had previously, I want to just address one point. Section 2 of the current ordinance, Alderman Fisk explicitly restricts this license to beer and wine only. So that's squared away. With respect to the issue of complete meal, there was some discussion about amending that language such that we don't get into the weeds, as it were, in terms of what constitutes a complete meal. I think that based upon the discussion and direction given to staff, we were going to be prepared to come back with a subset of Class D in order to restrict some to beer and wine only, some to alcoholic liquor, which would be all three kinds, and also to address this meal issue, specifically with respect to the proliferation of small plates and other business models that are going on. So I think that given the discussion and the evolving nature of the discussion, it would be appropriate, and I would respectfully request that we be allowed to work that through and bring it back to council at the appropriate time.
I think that's fine, and I thank you for the explanation. The other word that bothers me in response to what you're saying is the word "offered," because you can offer a meal that's not necessarily eating a meal. And that turns a Type 2 restaurant into a bar. Or could. Not necessarily does.
That was also referenced at the committee level as well, Alderman Fisk.
Okay.
What do we do then? I mean, do I need to make a motion for those changes here, or are they're just now going to be incorporated in further discussion? So what coverage then?
There's no current changes that can go into the ordinance right now because that's not before us right now. However, if you want to treat it as a reference, so that this issue -- it seems that this is an issue that's deserving of more consideration and study by the council and by staff, and I think that on a going-forward basis, given all the different points of interest that have been raised, it may be appropriate to bring that back as a code amendment. There is no code amendment for Class D that would apply to every license before the council right now, but we're treating it as a reference to staff to bring it back for full consideration.
Okay. Then I will add my reference to Alderman Rainey's reference.
All right, so we're ready to vote on your motions. Alderman Fisk?
Yes.
Okay.
Very briefly.
I'm Michael Kornick. I'm the owner of DMK Burger and Fish on Noys Street. We've been trying to participate and function with the recommendations you gave us. We cooperated with the idea of the beer and wine. I'm not sure why we're being held up here if we are. I'm not even sure of the protocol.
You're not being held up.
And I just want to say, I'm trying to serve alcohol responsibly as a lot of other places in town. And if you go into Smiley's, and I was there twice last week, it's a great place, and they tell you it's an hour wait for a table, and you go to the bar, and you order a beer flight. You get 30 ounces of beer in front of you with no food. And then if you say, you know what, after a half hour, I feel like going home, it's very slippery slope with this food idea or offering or meal. And it's not because your operators in Evanston want to turn their restaurants into a bar. We want to be restaurants, and we want someone to be able to enjoy a beer with food, but almost every restaurant we're talking about in Evanston has a bar adjacent to the restaurant. DMK Burger and Fish doesn't even have a bar. And I feel like it's a real slippery slope if you go into the Steakhouse there, or you go into many other restaurants. If you stop at the bar and then change your mind, you're asking Evanston residents to break the law by walking out and not eating if you have that food requirement. And in communities that have that village requirement, they don't have a bar. They only have dining tables. And we already have established that we think bars adjacent to restaurants are a really good business decision in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk.
Thank you, Mr. Kornick, and we certainly are glad that you are in our downtown -- in our town, but you're not in our downtown. You're in a residential neighborhood where a lot of concerns have been raised by neighbors. And traditionally, we have not even allowed beer and wine to be served at Type 2 restaurants outside of the downtown. There's only one license in the entire city. So you need to understand that there's a lot of dynamic that's at play here, and I think appreciate the fact that in Evanston, a lot of people have a lot of comments. They're affected directly by the way you run your business. It's not Sheffield Avenue. It's not Smiley Brothers. It's in basically a residential area that closes down pretty much by 9:00 PM. So that's where the concern is coming from.
Thank you. Alderman Rainey?
Well, actually, it's sort of a business district, but that's not my point. The point is, the discussion we had in committee --
Alderman, could you use your mic, please? Thank you.
The discussion we had in committee having to do with meals, it's been a long-time debate, what that all means. And my recommendation was that alcohol could be served while meals are available. That, well, because not everybody in the place is going to be drinking, but not everybody in the place is going to be eating a full meal either. So that would be my suggestion. I mean, he doesn't have a bar. He has no bar.
Madam Mayor, may I just comment?
Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. At the meeting that we had, there was reference to the acquisition of another storefront in order to have a bar. So, well, that was what was --
No, we're not going to have an argument from the floor. Thank you.
And I think we should cut discussion because we're going to bring this back to the committee, and there won't be anything for us to discuss.
Yeah. Okay, so it's before us to --
But we shouldn't be holding it up.
It's before us to pass Ordinance 76014, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses for DMK Burger Bar and Fish Bar, 815 Noys Street, as amended. So, City Clerk, would you call the roll?
This is with the amendment that --
Alderman Fisk, would you state your amendment?
No, I withdrew the amendment on the basis of what the Corporation Council said.
All right. Corporation Council, would you --
Beer and --
So there's no amendment?
No.
All right. So it's just the original Ordinance 76014?
Yes.
City Clerk?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, I believe that completes your --
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move introduction of Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from an I-2 district to R-4 for 1409 Dodge Avenue and 1825 Greenwood Street. This is for introduction.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this?
I think we'll be all right here, but I just want to let people know this is the property, the old auto repairs on Dodge, and so I'm being very supportive of it and the owners who are looking to transform that old business into a beautiful residence. So we'll appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from I-2 to R-4 for 1409 Dodge and 1825 Greenwood Street?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Eight to zero. I mean, eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and city staff recommend city council introduce Ordinance 89014 to approve zoning relief for two principal structures on one lot, a 14.4-foot front yard setback, 8.5-foot street side yard setback, 1.9-foot interior side yard setback, 1.7 interior side yard setback, 6.6 rear yard setback, and two parking spaces where three are required.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass P7, Ordinance 89014. Does anyone want to speak to this? Alderman Rainey?
As I said in committee, I think this is a wonderful project. Unfortunately, I have to vote against it.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, I believe that completes your --
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move introduction of Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from an I-2 district to R-4 for 1409 Dodge Avenue and 1825 Greenwood Street. This is for introduction.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this?
I think we'll be all right here, but I just want to let people know this is the property, the old auto repairs on Dodge, and so I'm being very supportive of it and the owners who are looking to transform that old business into a beautiful residence. So we'll appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from I-2 to R-4 for 1409 Dodge and 1825 Greenwood Street?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and city staff recommend city council introduce Ordinance 89014 to approve zoning relief for two principal structures on one lot, a 14.4-foot front yard setback, 8.5-foot street side yard setback, 1.9-foot interior side yard setback, 1.7 interior side yard setback, 6.6 rear yard setback, and two parking spaces where three are required.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass P7, Ordinance 89014. Does anyone want to speak to this? Alderman Rainey?
As I said in committee, I think this is a wonderful project. Unfortunately, I have to vote against it.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes.
That completes --
Thank you. Alderman Burris, Human Services. Nothing.
H3, suspension of rules.
Yeah.
H3, suspended rules.
I'm sorry. H3. Madam State. I apologize. I ask that you move Ordinance 26-0-14, Evanston Human Rights Ordinance. And I --
Thank you. That is for action.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 26014, Evanston Human Rights Ordinance. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, I believe that completes your --
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move introduction of Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from an I-2 district to R-4 for 1409 Dodge Avenue and 1825 Greenwood Street. This is for introduction.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this?
I think we'll be all right here, but I just want to let people know this is the property, the old auto repairs on Dodge, and so I'm being very supportive of it and the owners who are looking to transform that old business into a beautiful residence. So we'll appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. City Clerk, would you call the roll on Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from I-2 to R-4 for 1409 Dodge and 1825 Greenwood Street?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes.
Madam Mayor, and members of the council, the Plan Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals, and city staff recommend city council introduce Ordinance 89014 to approve zoning relief for two principal structures on one lot, a 14.4-foot front yard setback, 8.5-foot street side yard setback, 1.9-foot interior side yard setback, 1.7 interior side yard setback, 6.6 rear yard setback, and two parking spaces where three are required.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to pass P7, Ordinance 89014. Does anyone want to speak to this? Alderman Rainey?
As I said in committee, I think this is a wonderful project. Unfortunately, I have to vote against it.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Yes, sir.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
No.
Eight to one.
Eight to one, the motion passes.
That completes --
Thank you. Alderman Burris, Human Services. Nothing.
H3, suspension of rules.
Yeah.
H3, suspended rules.
I'm sorry. H3. Madam State. I apologize. I ask that you move Ordinance 26-0-14, Evanston Human Rights Ordinance. And I --
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that is for action.
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Ordinance 26014, Evanston Human Rights Ordinance. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tindham.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to zero.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, I believe that completes your --
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move introduction of Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from an I-2 district to R-4 for 1409 Dodge Avenue and 1825 Greenwood Street. This is for introduction.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Does anyone want to speak to this? Alderman Rainey?
As I said in committee, I think this is a wonderful project. Unfortunately, I have to vote against it.
Thank you. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Nine to nothing, the motion passes. Alderman Holmes, I believe that completes your --
That concludes my report, Madam Mayor.
Alderman Rainey, could we have Planning and Development, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, I move introduction of Ordinance 83014, zoning ordinance map amendment from an I-2 district to R-4 for 1409 Dodge Avenue and 1825 Greenwood Street. This is for introduction.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the ayes have it.[1780.33]